This meeting of the Brooklyn City Council to order. Mary Jo, could you please call the roll?
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Tony DiMarco.
Here.
Debbie Tomusko.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Mary Belvier.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Barb Politzky.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start tonight's meeting with some approval of a couple sets of minutes. The first will be minutes from the meeting held on February 22nd. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
To approve, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Tony DiMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
abstain.
Mary Belvier.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
All right, also set of minutes from the meeting held on March 14th. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
To approve, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Tony DiMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
abstain.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvier.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
All right, we're gonna do something a little bit unusual tonight, and that is we're gonna go into executive session at the start of our council meeting. And the reason for that is because our labor attorney is here and we are paying him to be here, so we wanna get him in, deal with him, get him out of here, so we can save some money in the long run. So, we are gonna move into executive session this evening to discuss matters of negotiations regarding contracts that are to be voted on tonight. In that executive session will be our labor attorney, our law director, the mayor, and council. So if I could please have a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
I do have a question, though. Are we gonna have another executive session at the end of the meeting? Just because it was... No?
I was not planning executive session.
No.
To adjourn to executive session, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Tony DiMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvier.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
When we come back, we'll reconvene and continue with the rest of our agenda for the evening. Can I make a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Second?
To reconvene, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Tony DiMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Belvier.
Yes.
Kevin Dansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
All right, thank you everyone for your patience, and we apologize for that. Just to let you know what's going on tonight, we do have quite a lengthy agenda, so we'll move through it as quickly as possible. We do have a liquor permit request for Starbucks. Ordinance 2015-77 is still held in abeyance, which is establishing the full-time position of economic development with the city of Brooklyn. Ordinance 2016-22 is up for third reading and adoption, and this is authorizing the sale of certain city-owned vehicles through gov deals, public internet auctioneers for the purchase of disposing of city vehicles and equipment at public sale. Ordinance 2016-23 is on third reading and adoption, will also be amending this tonight and then passing it by emergency, but this is establishing fees for advertising the John M. Coyne Recreation Center. Ordinance 2016-25 is on second reading, but we're gonna also pass by emergency tonight as establishing the fee for participation in the city of Brooklyn's farmers market. Ordinance 2016-26 is on second reading, authorizing agreement with James G. Zupka CPA Incorporated to provide audit services to the city of Brooklyn for the audit periods 2015 through 2018 pursuant to the authorization of the Auditor of State. We have Resolution 2016-2 to honor and recognize Daniel Enavich for his service to the city of Brooklyn, Ohio. Ordinance 2016-27 is on first reading, providing for the issuance and sale of $356,496 in notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of resurfacing certain streets to be approved by city council, together with all work incidental thereto, and declaring emergency. Ordinance 2016-28 is also on first reading, providing for the issuance and sale of $303,504 in notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay costs of improvements to city buildings, including parking therefor, and declaring emergency. Ordinance 2016-29 will be passing by emergency tonight, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Eclipse Company LLC for construction services for Tiedemann Road PID number 95548 with the lowest and best bid of $1,325,737.97. Ordinance 2016-30 will also be passing by emergency this evening, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Chagrin Valley Paving for construction services for Memphis Avenue PID 86256 with the lowest and best bid of $1,254,326.70. Ordinance 2016-31, establishing Section 1360.32 for closing filing notification of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn. Ordinance 2016-32, establishing Chapter 1362 Certificate of Inspection at the Point of Sale and amending Section 1360.24 Repair of Code Violations of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Brooklyn. Ordinance 2016-33 will also be passing by emergency this evening, authorizing a contract with Quality Control Inspection for contract administration and construction inspection for the Tiedemann Road PID 95548 project. Ordinance 2016-34 will also be passing by emergency this evening, authorizing a contract with Quality Control Inspection for contract administration and construction inspection for the Memphis Avenue PID 86256 project. Ordinance 2016-35, authorizing the mayor of the city of Brooklyn, Ohio to enter into a contract with the Northern Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association, Patrol and Sergeant Units will be passing this by emergency this evening. Ordinance 2016-36, authorizing the mayor of the city of Brooklyn, Ohio to enter into agreement with the Northern Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association, Jailer's Unit will also be passing this by emergency this evening. We will now proceed with our normal council meeting at this time. We'll have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and well of the city of Brooklyn, Ohio, please step forward, say your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue, Brooklyn, Ohio. I've been a volunteer with Pediatric Brain Tumor Foundation for about eight or nine years now, helped fighting cancer tumors in children. One girl I've known for quite a few years now, I don't remember her last name, is Ashley. She's a graduate of Brooklyn High School about two to three years ago. Another young girl is Olivia. She passed, I had known her parents and her through joining the foundation, joining the volunteer staff, and she passed away in 2010 at 13 years old. We have a fundraiser coming up at Ace's Grill in North Ridgeville. It's this Saturday, April 16th, 8 to 10 p.m. Tickets are $20 in advance, 25 at the door. It's a wing buffet, includes wings, rigatoni meatballs, pizza, salad, bread, and four drink tickets. Refreshments are there also. We have some fundraiser things we're doing for it. One is a booze basket. Tickets are $5 apiece, or five for 20. Several Bombay, Sapphire, Gin, Blue Bourbon, excuse my maling for this, Jack Daniels, Captain Morgan, Spiced Rum, Bailey's Irish Cream, and several others. We also, for anyone that's... Pardon? Thanks. Also, we're offering a 48-inch Insignia LED TV with wall mount, $10 each, or three for 20. For anyone that's a golfer, we have a golf outing coming up on May 23rd, tee time at 9:00. It's the Copper Top Restaurant. Foursome is $340, lunch with two drink tickets. Dinner is free, with free beer at dinner, GPS with live leaderboard for diehard golfers and all kinds of stuff like that. I'm not. Also, on June 12th, we have a ride. If anyone was interested in tickets, a couple phone numbers you can call. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have anything? Okay, we will now move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards. Tonight will begin with the Finance Committee, Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you, good evening. The Finance Committee met earlier this evening at 6:15 to accommodate a lengthy agenda that we had. I'm gonna focus on one ordinance that we are amending this evening and also new items on our agenda. The first one, ordinance 2016-23, this establishes fees for advertising at the John M. Coyne Recreation Center. This is on third reading this evening, however, there's been a change, or several changes since the last meeting. Basically, we took the higher end of the range that we're going to charge for the advertising and increased it. So, for the rink sizes, for the 10-by-12 banner, the range will be $200 to $1,000. And for the 12-by-24 banner, $400 to $2,000. For pool size, which are 3-by-6, the range will now be $100 to $500. For baseball field size, which is 4-by-8, $125 to $600. And for a Zamboni wrap, excuse me, rap, the range will be $1,000 to $5,000. So, the committee did recommend that council approve these changes and also pass it under a suspension of the rules this evening. We also had a discussion, I had asked our law director, Mr. Butler, to establish an advertising policy to ensure that we have a policy in place and also procedures for advertisers to follow, including an appeal process. And Mr. Butler did provide us with a draft, and the Finance Committee, no one had any objections. So, thank you very much for that. Okay, new this evening is ordinance 2016-27 and 28. Mr. Van Kirk already read it by title, so I don't wanna be redundant. Basically, this is our annual rollover of our notes that we had issued, and we're gonna pay $110,000 on each note. And so that'll be a total of $220,000 that will be reducing our debt. And the deadline for these notes, they come due June 9th. So, this evening, we start that process. Ordinance 2016-29, which authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract with Eclipse Company for construction services for Tiedemann Road. They were the lowest and best bid of $1,325,737.97. And this is for the dedicated right-hand turn lane on Tiedemann. And this is being paid for mostly with federal dollars. We also got the county to come up with some, and Brooklyn will be participating also. Next is ordinance 2016-30, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Chagrin Valley Paving for construction services for Memphis Avenue, the lowest and best bid, $1,254,326.70. And I have to say that this project was a very long time in coming. It's probably been about 10 years since we first initiated this process. One of the delays was that when it looked like Memphis and Ridge were gonna be done the same year, we asked for the delay, but then there were other subsequent delays after that that were beyond our control. So I know anyone who drives down Memphis Avenue, this is gonna be a welcome relief to get this going. Ordinance 2016-31, which is on first reading, establishing Section 1360.32 for closure filing notification of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn. Basically, this is going to establish a process where, when there is a foreclosure, whoever is doing the foreclosing, they're going to have to register with the city, and when there's a vacant structure, they're going to have to give us a contact on who is gonna be responsible for maintaining the property while it's vacant. There are some fees involved. There's a $75 fee if the notice is filed in a timely manner. If it's not filed in a timely manner, the charge will be $150. And this is on first reading this evening. Next, ordinance 2016-32, which is also on first reading, establishing Chapter 1362 Certificate of Inspection at Point of Sale and amending Section 1360.24 Repair of Code Violations of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Brooklyn. This will establish a point-of-sale inspection that will be required in the city of Brooklyn anytime a property is sold and/or transfers. This is gonna help us keep up our housing stock. There are fees involved in this also. The fee for the inspection will be $100. If a reinspection is needed, that will be for a charge of $35. It's a little bit lengthy. We did have some questions, which Mr. Coltsar is gonna check into. This just starts the process. So if any residents wanna weigh in on this, feel free to contact any one of us. Next is ordinance 2016-33, which will be passed by emergency measure this evening, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Quality Control Inspection Incorporated for construction management, construction inspection, and material testing services for Tiedemann Road in the amount of $136,792. There is a process established in the Ohio Revice Code and also by ODOT that governs how these firms are selected. And I know that there were some questions on it. I'm not sure when Mr. Butler said he was gonna weigh in, so probably when it's up for adoption. And the companion ordinance to that is 2016-34, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the same firm, Quality Control Inspection, for construction management, construction inspection, and material testing services for the Memphis Avenue project in the amount of $139,736. Then we also have ordinance 2016-34... I'm sorry, 35 and 36, which are the contracts, the labor agreements with the Northern Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association, Patrol and Sergeant's Unit, and the Jailer's Unit. This calls for a 2% raise for each of these units. And there is some slight changes to some of the language, but also what's gonna benefit the city in the future is the progression rate from the time when a new employee starts in each of these units until they max out after a three-year period is stretched out, so it's a lower amount starting, and that'll save us approximately $35,000 for each new hire. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. Next up is Recreation Board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Silver Sneakers had a productive year with revenue that reached $27,907.50 for the year ending 2015. Brooklyn Summer Camp 2016 will be held at the Brooklyn Elementary School 9200 Bed Off Road. The age groups for summer camp are 5- to 6-year-olds, 7- to 8-year-olds, 9- and 10-year-olds, 11- and 12-year-olds. Students must be five years of age to participate. Berth certificate required upon registration for all 5- and 6-year-olds. Pricing is Brooklyn resident fee, $275. St. Thomas More Heritage Christian School, Parma Heights, and corporate fee, $345. Price includes a camp t-shirt. Pricing does not include field trips. Field trips are optional, and a separate fee. Pricing does not include a daily lunch. You may register for Brooklyn Camp, you may register for Camp Brooklyn beginning May 1st through June 1st. Please be advised that if you register after June 1st, your child will not be able to receive a Brooklyn t-shirt. Registrations will be accepted after June 1st. However, discounts will not be given for late registrations. Camp offerings include games, arts and crafts, swimming, annual picnic, 4th of July pole party, sports, talent show, and whole camp field trips that are age-appropriate. 5- and 6-year-olds age group will receive swimming instructions by a certified lifeguard. For more information, please contact Camp Brooklyn Director Rebecca Bindis at daycamp@brooklynohio.gov, or call 216-351-3554. The next Recreation Board meeting will be held on Monday, April 18th, in the Rec Center Meeting Room at 7:00 p.m. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is Board of Zoning Appeals, Commissioner Coltsar.
Thank you. The Brooklyn Board of Building... Excuse me, let me start over. Brooklyn Zoning Board of Appeals meeting that was scheduled for April 21st at 6:00 p.m. Has been canceled. No applications were received. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Lastly, tonight, Planning Commission, Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. The Planning Commission met last Thursday, April 7th, at 6:00 p.m. in the conference room. We approved the following request. The request from Scott Clifford, representing TDA Architects, for site plan approval located at 4500 Ridge Road, permanent parcel number 432-23-005, formerly Brookridge Elementary School, and 4525 Rodone Road, permanent parcel number 432-22-002, formerly Rodone School. This request was previously presented at the July 9th, 2015 Planning Commission meeting, and it was deferred from the March 3rd, 2016 Planning Commission meeting because we did not have a quorum of those members who would be eligible to vote on it. We did approve this. There are no changes to their initial proposal. They do plan on keeping Hurricane Alley open at both ends, which I know was a point of discussion last fall. They're going to regrade the football practice field, and they're going to establish a girls' softball field. There will be no soccer field, which I know was one of the proposals when they were originally talking about the plan over there. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. Next, we'll move on with reports of councils. To the council, and tonight we begin with Councilman DiMarco.
I would just wanna offer my condolences to the family of Janet Kozak, her husband Tony, and her two sons. Janet is very well-known around town, very involved in a lot of different aspects of the community. She's touched a lot of people positively, including myself, and I just wanted to offer my condolences, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Marco. Next up is Mr. Musko.
Just a couple comments. I know I'm commenting on ordinances that are in first proposal, but... Which I don't know if I'm allowed to or not, but anyway. I think the... I welcome the two ordinances that are coming forward on foreclosure properties and also properties being inspected before they can be sold, because I know that that is a major concern for a lot of people, citizens here in Brooklyn, is the condition of the housing stock, and that neighbors aren't necessarily maintaining their property or keeping them up. And that's such a critical thing when we work to strengthen and market Brooklyn as a place that we want people to move to. It's so important that when people come into our community and drive around, that they're looking at homes that are, you know, kept up and et cetera. So I really welcome those two. They're still open for discussion and input from the community, but I really think that's a step in the right direction so that we can ensure that the houses look, you know, look like the kind of neighborhood we'd like to live in. The other comment I just wanted to make is we've had some discussion around people being appointed to positions as we've had open slots within the city for different committees and et cetera. And I just wanted to comment that it's a city... I know in some cases it's... People tend to gravitate to people that they know and try to, you know, get people that they know and that they work with to sit on committees. But we have a city of over 10,000 people, and the more people and the more mix that we can get to assist us in city committees and council committees, and when we're planning for a fall festival, when we're doing the "Beautify Brooklyn Again", the more people that we can get involved who are willing to put their time and talent toward the city, the better we'll be. We have an incredible wealth of talented people within the city with a wide range of talent. And if everybody could just give a little bit of their time and get involved, it really would enhance the future planning for Brooklyn. So I just wanted to make a comment that please watch your websites and watch the newspapers and things as we start to move forward on a lot of the special events and things that we'll be doing. It would be great if we could get a nice mix of people. And I know everybody's busy, and I know everybody's working, and I know everybody, once they get home, they don't wanna go out again. But again, the better cross-mix that we have of people, the better it will be for Brooklyn in terms of contribution. And the only other last comment I have to make is, again, I'm new to council, so maybe this is the way it's been done for quite a long time, but it just seems to me that so many of the things that we've been passing since I've joined council have been emergency measures. And if I'm looking at spending the citizens' money as a councilperson, I would really appreciate having more time to take a look at it, more time to study it, rather than having it presented in a meeting and it becomes an emergency measure, and then we sort of have a gun to our head that we need to pass it that day, or else it's, you know, something's gonna completely stop working or fall apart. So, again, in spending citizen money, I really would prefer to try to minimize. I mean, there are emergencies. Clearly, things happen where it's an emergency. But if it's consistently happening, then it's not really an emergency. So, that's something I know I might be confusing, but it just seems like we've been passing a lot of things that have been labeled emergency. And I think it'd be great if we had the time, if we had the planning, so that we could really discuss it ahead of time and then pass it with full confidence that we've completely looked at it. And that's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Next up is Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. I too would like to offer my condolences to the Kozak family. I had a couple of quick questions. I heard from a resident, again, that we keep having delays in getting the council meetings up on the website. And I don't know if somebody can tell me what the process is, how we get it down to the county, and why there seems to be a delay. If no one can answer it tonight, if someone could give me a call. I'm not sure what the process is right now.
Can I answer that question?
Okay, thank you.
Right now, how it's taped is Mr. Calper will tape the program. It will take a couple days to burn onto DVD. Then my secretary will pick up that CD and mail it to the county, then the county will put it on the website. So overall, it takes about a week and a couple days, depending on when it hits, if it hits a weekend or not.
Okay. And with some of the upgrades that we're looking at, do we know if there'll be a way for us to transmit it digitally?
We initially talked about that about two years ago. The cost is very high upfront.
Okay. Yeah, I remember discussing it a couple years ago, and that's why we didn't... But I didn't know if, with some of the technology upgrades we're looking at, if it's gonna be less costly or not. Okay. And on the same note, I had a call from another resident regarding minutes on the website. And what they had reported was that they were lagging behind in 2015, but now there's nothing there from 2015. And I know in the past that we always had at least, the previous year, in fact, for good periods of time, we had two years plus the current. So if, Mary Jo, maybe you could look at that? I just got that call over the weekend. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I intervene?
Sure.
I could take responsibility for that. At the beginning of this year, I've asked Mary Jo to keep up to date on the minutes from this year. She will be catching up on 2015. They were not passed by council, that's why they are not on the website. And she will be catching up on those over the summertime.
Okay. I do think we had some passed in 2015, though, that we could probably throw up there. So if you could double-check, Mary Jo. Thank you. Two other quick things. The first is, there's been a bit of a pattern in incomplete information being given to council, and some of this information coming to us on Monday, which, you know, I'm not gonna blame any one person because it's been kind of a mix. But I just wanna go on record as it's not acceptable and it is not fair to council. We, you know, have our 4 o'clock Thursday deadline for a reason. We always make allowances in getting additional information on Friday. And then sometimes, yes, there are emergencies. But in general, if people could please make sure that we've got everything we need, including either a memo if necessary, or if you don't wanna write a memo, certainly people are free to include information on our agenda form. But we've gotta start doing a better job, because we all... Most of us have jobs up here, and it's not fair to expect us to try and review information on a Monday. So I just wanna point that out to people and make sure there's a better job being done, getting us the information in a timely manner. done, getting us the information in a timely manner. And lastly, Mr. Ardito, I want to thank you for your efforts in fundraising for pediatric brain cancer, and I can tell you that Ashley is doing very well. Thank you. That completes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. Next up is Councilwoman Bellbeer.
Thank you. I too would like to send out special condolences to the Kozak family on the loss of their wife and their mother. Janet passed away a couple of weeks ago, and I know that the St. Thomas More community will miss her infectious smile, her kind words, and her angelic voice, a true angel of God. I attended her wake, and what a tribute it was to see such an outpour of a Brooklyn community's support at her wake. The line was virtually out the door. I know she had a devotion to the Divine Mercy, and the day that her wake was being held was on Divine Mercy Sunday. Just a little note, if you're Catholic, you know what I mean. What a good and faithful servant of God. It was an honor to know her and to meet her. So my sincere condolences to the family. On another note, an Ohio House bill that caught my eye concerns small claims courts in Ohio. Each county and municipal court in Ohio is required to have a small claims division. The municipal court that covers Brooklyn's residents is, of course, the Parma Municipal Court. Small claims courts were established to handle cases that are basically too small and uneconomic to hire a lawyer to pursue. In small claims court, you can go to the clerk of court, get a form, and write out your complaint against whom you feel has wronged you. Each side could hire a lawyer, but the court is designed to function without lawyers. The case is heard by a magistrate, not a judge, and there are no juries. It is a more informal proceeding than cases in open court before a judge. The small claims division is geared to resolving small claims fast and economically. For a long time, the monetary jurisdiction of a small claims division has been about $3,000, not including interests and costs. House Bill 390 is doubling the jurisdictional ceiling to 6,000 instead of 3,000. This may help more people that they feel have been economically wronged to have their matter heard without hiring a lawyer. Going to court can be a very daunting experience. Small claims court tried to minimize that. We recently received from the state of Ohio a paper-bound booklet. It's about 160 pages long, extolling all the wonderful places and the thousands of interesting sites to visit and experience in our state. If anyone is interested, I highly recommend it. I just had it delivered to my house. It's, you call 1-800-BUCKeye, and you get a free copy. Give them your name, your address, and they send it out to you. One place that greatly impressed me was the Western Reserve National Cemetery in Rittman, Ohio. We had been to Arlington in Washington several years ago, and I remember the awesome feeling that comes over one viewing the massive grounds, observing its memorials, such as the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier and the final resting place of John F. Kennedy. There are a small number of national cemeteries in the United States, including the one in Rittman. It's roughly about 40 minutes away, 35, 40 miles. I have a number of customers that attend my restaurant and their spouses that are buried there, and they're veterans. My husband is a veteran, a Vietnam one, and we decided to see Rittman about a week ago. Any U.S. veteran and their spouses are eligible to be buried there. The cemetery is a huge expanse of land with row after row of white grave markers, exactly like you see in the pictures of the U.S. Cemetery in Normandy, France. It has beautiful walkways and memorials. There are various flags that are flying depicting different branches of the military. There's even, of course, the POW flag. There was a tremendous awe of feeling as we traversed through it, the same feeling I had in the past years when we visited Arlington and Gettysburg. It's almost like you are on holy ground. It makes you proud of all the men and women, especially from Ohio and in this area, who have served in our armed forces and are forever in the place of honor. I'd also like to mention, as we turned the corner, I happened to look to my right and see the grave of Sergeant Angel Lopez, the fellow that his parents lived here in Brooklyn, actually down the street on Rodone. So it was almost like the hand of God, I turned and saw his grave there. So it was very heartwarming, and if you ever get a chance to go out there and see it, you know, it will, it will bring a tear to your eye. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bellbeer. Next up is Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. Again, just a reminder that Youth Opportunities is currently accepting the application for summer work program. If you have any questions or would like to register, go to www.youthopportunities.org. Information is also available at City Hall, Rec Center, Brooklyn High School, and the Brooklyn Library. Registration closes Monday, May 2nd at 5:00 PM. The reason I'm reading this every week, because last year, I don't think we had, we had people apply that were Brooklyn students, residents here, but didn't continue in the application process, and I don't believe, Maria, you can correct me, that we didn't have anybody from Brooklyn last year, so they went to the outside to get students to work either at our Rec Center or our Service Center. So if you could remind all the Brooklyn students in 16 or older to register for these youth opportunities, the jobs are being, the salaries and the wages are being picked up by the county, so I'd appreciate if you could get the word out. A special thanks to Daniel Enavich for his years of service and dedication to the city of Brooklyn. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is Ms. Politsky.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. Last Friday, I attended a tree training seminar at Tri-C. I have with me a brochure that is titled "Plant a Tree, Save a Fish." I know that sounds strange, but once you read the brochure, it makes a lot of sense, so I'm going to read it. What do forests have to do with fish? A lot. Healthy fish and people require healthy streams. Healthy streams with clean water are ones surrounded by trees. Leaves that fall into streams make fish food. Insects and invertebrates eat. Trees keep the soil in place so it doesn't erode. Trees and shrubs block, filter, and absorb runoff. Every tree, anywhere, improves the environment. And why should we care? You drink water. Clean water starts in your own backyard. You breathe air. Trees are the earth's lungs, cleaning the air and making oxygen, and there's just been a recent report that said where trees are scarce, respiratory illnesses go up by at least 15 percent. You get hot in summer. Trees beat the heat and help your air conditioning bills, and in winter, they shelter, and your furnace doesn't be used as much. You drive a car, so you park in a parking lot, and it's nice and shady, and you eat, sometimes fish. So, the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago. The second-best time is now, so I would like to see everybody in this city plant at least one tree, or else donate one in memory of someone for someone else to plant. Thank you. That ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Politsky. Just a couple of things. I wanted to thank Mr. Butler, our new law director here. I know that he's jumped in headfirst into a lot of things here in the city of Brooklyn, but I appreciate the work that he's done in getting these contracts to us and ready to go so quickly. First of all, I wanted to thank him for his hard work on that. I know there's a million things pressing on you, especially coming in, but I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank Mr. Enavich, although he's not here tonight, or we're going to recognize him in a second, but I also want to thank Joanne for stepping in as the interim finance director and getting her reports and stuff to us in a timely manner. I do appreciate that. And also for Mr. Courtney and Mr. Verba for their work on this project for Memphis. I know Mrs. Pucci discussed it a minute ago, and Memphis is definitely in need of being done, and so we're grateful to have that ball rolling, so thank you, gentlemen, for your work on that. Also, to address something that Ms. Tomusco said, regarding emergency measures, this is something that I brought up in the past as well, and they have been drastically reduced since the time that I've been on council. Like, for example, the ones tonight are mainly because of timing issues, like, for example, the contracts, and we have 14 days to respond. So I agree with you, but we want to get things done in a timely manner, but for the most part, the emergency, things that are passed are passed by emergency because they're of time importance. Yeah, they're emergencies. We only meet up once every two weeks, and we have to go through three readings, so that's six weeks that we have to go through, and sometimes because of deadlines, we have to pass by emergency, but I certainly understand where you're coming from. And that's all I have, so next up, we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you, council president. I just first would like to start off tonight by reading a letter that I received from one of the residents. Dear Mayor Gallagher, I'd like to recognize one of your officers. On Thursday, March 31st, my son was outside playing in the front yard. Officer Phil Bungo passed our house on bid off several times while on patrol. Each time he passed, my son waved at the officer with the officer returning his wave. On the officer's last pass, he decided to stop and play with my son for a few minutes. I was in my house, but could hear my son playing and where he was in the yard. Things got quiet for a couple of minutes, so I looked out to see what my son was doing. I saw that my son was playing with one of the officers. I went out to check to make sure that his ball hadn't went in the street and that the officer retrieved the ball. Officer Bungo told me that my son had kept waving at him, so he decided to stop. He and my son had a very nice conversation, including that Officer Bungo had been at his son's class for Brooklyn Elementary Read to School Week. I feel that Officer Bungo showed great initiative and compassion stopping a play with a young child who was playing by himself. Officer Bungo was a positive idea of a police officer in the mind of a child. I know my son really enjoyed this encounter with the officer. I think it's great that Brooklyn officers take the time to invest in the children in our city. My thanks to Officer Bungo for a job well done. It's not all the time that I get positive letters like that, so I think it's great to pass on. Officer Bungo had actually recently just been to the Senior Center for the St. Patrick's Day Lunch, going around each table, introducing himself, so he is a good example of a police officer in our city, and I look forward to more letters about other officers like this in the future. At the Mayor's and Managers Association meeting last week, there was a presentation by the Cleveland Food Bank, and they gave out some stats, including some on the city of Brooklyn, and I was kind of shocked to see these. In 1999, the people living below the 200% of poverty in the city of Brooklyn was 20.9. In 2014, this percentage is 37.3%. So, you know, I know many people don't think that others are feeling the economy right now, but they are. So I have some information from the food bank, and I'm going to make copies of this and put it up there. If you know somebody that's struggling right now, if you could pass this on, give them some resources to help them out. A couple of weeks ago, I also sent council an email about, a resident asking about dogs in Memorial Park. As most of you know, we allow dogs in Marquardt Park right now, and for years, we haven't allowed the same thing in Memorial Park. I'm asking council to look at this and reevaluate, maybe we should start to consider this in our city. And I know a couple of the council members responded to that email, but I was hoping maybe, Deb, if you, as the chair of the Safety and Environmental Committee, could bring it up on committee and make a recommendation formally so we can move forward. Additionally, as I brought up in the Finance Committee, West Bid Off is part of a section of the street that is not on our inventory for our engineer, and it kind of goes back and forth when the Plain Dealer was built. This was our responsibility, but for some reason, has been neglected for many years. And we do get a lot of phone calls from the employees that work there, so I asked our engineer to take a look at it. On a scale of 1 to 5, it's rating a 3, which is pretty low, considering most of our streets are 4 and 5. So I asked him to give me a price on that, and it's about $46,000 to repair with all the contingencies. If something were to happen, up to $105,000. So I'm asking Mr. DeMarco, as chair of the Public Works Committee, if you could review this fact and if your committee recommends getting West Bid Off done, if you could bring it back to me. And lastly, I'd like to mention the ordinances about the foreclosures and the point of sale. Dave Kolsar, our building commissioner, and his team in the Building Department are working on a number of things to making a good housing stabilization program, and these ordinances just go along with that plan. I think Brooklyn is behind the curve on these things, and I think these are the first step to building our housing stock back up. So I commend Mr. Kolsar for his work on these ordinances. Additionally, you'll see one more at the next council meeting. This is on vacant property, and this is an ordinance that Mr. Tansky had asked, and this is another good ordinance that will help build up our housing stock. So, thank you, Mr. Kolsar, for your work on these ordinances, and I look forward to your comprehensive plan for this summer.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
I just, I don't know if Mr. Tansky or if Mrs. McGinty would be able to answer this, but just so residents have all the information, when students apply for positions with youth opportunities, there are income, either guidelines or thresholds? Do we know what those are?
There are incomes, and yeah, there are guidelines on the income. I don't know exactly the thresholds. I can get you that if you need that.
Okay.
I think that's why, when it comes to that, is where the holdup is, because they do apply for the jobs, and I don't know if they get to the first or second interview, but when it comes to bringing proof of income, they don't show up.
So they have to provide the proof of income for the family, the parents, basically?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, very good. Well, now move on with directors' reports, and tonight, we start with the rec manager, Ms. McGinty.
I don't know. Oh, it's going to work. It says low battery, so I'll make it quick. Good evening. We will be taking registration for youth-based volunteer T-ball until April 27th during regular business hours. Resident rates are $55 for ages 4 through 14. Three-year-old T-ball is $50. For more information, please call 216-351-5334. And please note, all participants must bring in a copy of their birth certificate. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. McGinty. Next up is our interim finance director, Ms. Hegg.
I just want to remind residents that municipal tax returns are due Monday, April 18th. The Finance Department is here to assist all residents free of charge, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30. They can also contact Rita, and Rita's hours are 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. They are located at 10107 Brexville Road in Brexville. They can be reached at 1-800-860-7482, or 440-526-0900.
Thank you. Next up is our building commissioner, Mr. Kolsar.
Thank you. I just want to give residents a heads-up as weather is supposed to be changing into spring here. We are anticipating getting our property maintenance, exterior property maintenance inspections into full gear, and just so people know where we are heading, we're currently on Southfield and moving north through the neighborhood there along Ridge, so if you see our property maintenance inspector, Marty Byer, out there, don't be alarmed, but keep your properties maintained. Thank you. That concludes my report.
I'm sorry, may I be recognized one more time?
Yes.
Mr. Kolsar, talking about the rain reminded me, I just want to make sure somebody goes back and looks at the, I guess you call it a gully, that runs behind the homes on Elizabeth Lane with the whole senior living. I think you're aware, we had some flooding back there, and I just want to make sure that we don't encounter that, because they were like repeat flooding situations, so I just want to make sure that that's clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, now move on with our ordinances and resolutions for this evening. We start off this evening with a liquor permit request. The chief, the police chief is not here, but he has no objections to this.
Move for a position of no objection, and just for the record, this is for Starbucks.
Second.
For a position of no objection, Ron Van Kirk.
Stay.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusco.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politsky.
Yes.
Orness 2015-77, establishing the full-time position of Economic Development Director with the city of Brooklyn. This is still in abeyance. Orness 2016-22 is up for third reading and adoption, authorizing the sale of certain city-owned vehicles through GovDeals, public internet city-owned vehicles through GovDeals, public internet auctioneers, for the purpose of disposing of city vehicles and equipment at public sale. Just once again, it's a 1991 Caterpillar and a 2006 Pelican Street Sweeper.
Move to adopt.
Second.
To adopt, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ordinance 2016-23, establishing fees for advertising the John M. Quinn Recreation Center. We are going to have to amend this tonight, and here are the amendments. The rink sizes for the advertising changes from 12 by 12 to 10 by 12, which is a standard size. The new price will be between $200 and $1,000 instead of $500. Also, we're changing the size of 24 by 24 to 12 by 24. The price for this changes from $400 to $2,000 instead of from $400 to $700. And pool sizes are 3 by 6, and the price change goes, instead of $100 to $400, it's $100 to $500. Baseball field size is 4 by 8, and the new price is between 125 and 600 instead of 125 to 425. And the Zamboni wrap, the new price is from 1,000 to 5,000 instead of 1,000 to 3,000.
Second on the amendment.
To amend, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Introduced by all, suspend the rules, as amended.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
To adopt, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Ordinance 2016-26 is on second reading. This is authorizing an agreement with James G. Zapka CPA Incorporated to provide audit services to the city of Brooklyn for the audit periods of 2015 to 2018 pursuant to authorization of the Auditor of State, and this is on second reading. Next up is Resolution 2016-2, and I'm going to read this in its entirety. To honor and recognize Daniel Enavich for his service to the city of Brooklyn, Ohio. Whereas Brooklyn City Council takes pride in recognizing outstanding citizens and public servants in our community who have contributed to the benefit of the city of Brooklyn. And whereas Daniel Enavich served as Finance Director for the city of Brooklyn from October 15th, 2013 through March 2016. And whereas prior to serving as Finance Director, Daniel Enavich was a member of City Council, served in the Parma Hospital Board of Trustees, and was a member and chairman of the Civil Service Commission. Whereas Daniel Enavich values his family and his community and has special charities and organizations he takes personally, takes personal and active parts in. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Brooklyn, County of Cuyahoga, and State of Ohio. Section 1, the administration of the city of Brooklyn and the Brooklyn City Council, on behalf of the entire community, hereby recognize and honor Daniel Enavich, and congratulate and commend him on his service to the city of Brooklyn, and further wish him well in his retirement. That it is found and determined that all formal actions of the Council of the City of Brooklyn concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of such body, and that all deliberations of this Council of the City of Brooklyn and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, Section 121.22 of the Higher Revised Code. That this resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its passage and approved by the mayor. Otherwise, it shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Introduced by all, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
To adopt, Ron Van Kirk. Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Introduced by all, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
To adopt, Ron Van Kirk. Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Introduced by all, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
The next two ordinances are on first reading. Ordinance 2016-31, establishing Section 1360.32 foreclosure filing notification of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn. Ordinance 2016-32, establishing Chapter 1362, certificate of inspection at point of sale and amending Section 1360.24, repair of code violations of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn. Ordinance 2016-33, authorizing a contract with quality control inspection for contract administration and construction inspection for the Tiedemann Road PID 95548 project at a cost of $136,792. Introduced by all, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
To adopt, Ron Van Kirk. Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Introduced by all, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Introduced by all, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusko.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Mary Bellbeer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Barb Politzky.
Yes.
Next is ordinance 2016-35, authorizing the mayor of the city of Brooklyn, Ohio, to enter into a contract with the Northern Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent Association Patrol and Sergeant Units. And this is, Mrs. Pucci mentioned the amount of the raise, and this is for one year. This is a one-year deal that we did for this.
Introduced by all, suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.